Call this public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Downey.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahan.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here. The purpose of said public hearings is to hear testimony and to discuss the following.
File of the Council number thirty-three, two thousand and eighteen, approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license owned by Sri Sibaba Corporation, doing business as TJ's Beer and Deli, currently in safekeeping with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, formerly used at sixteen forty Main Street Dixon City, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, one eight four four seven, for use at eighteen oh one eighteen oh three Pittston Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, one eight five oh five, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
Nobody signed in on the sign-in sheet? Is there anybody who would like to offer public comment on specifically this liquor transfer? Not meeting adjourned. Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all of those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Downey.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahan.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here. Please dispense with the-
I'd like to make a motion to name Councilman Evans as temporary chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three A agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting to be held October tenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
Three B tax assessors results report for hearing date held September nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
Three C agenda for the City Planning Commission Meeting held September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Actually neglected to make the announcements, so we're gonna back it up. Do any council members have announcements to make at this time?
I just have one. The Green Ridge Fall Festival will be held this Saturday from ten to four at Green Ridge Corners.
I have a couple. The Lackawanna County Veterans Affairs Office will be closed this week, October first through the fifth, for mandatory staff training to be held in Erie, Pennsylvania. The training will provide information on programs and services to assist families, veterans and their families. The twenty-third annual Steamtown Marathon will be held this Sunday, October seventh. The twenty-six point two mile course starts in Forest City and finishes in Courthouse Square in downtown Scranton. Please be mindful of the runners and the road closures as you're traveling throughout the city. We would like to wish all the best for a good race and for all of those who are participating this Sunday. Next Monday, October eighth, City Hall will be closed in observation of Columbus Day. DPW will not be working this day. Refuse and Blue Recycling cans will be one day behind this week.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hoda-Wanitz.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, city resident and taxpayer. So what is the progress on the city audit? You still looking at the end of the week for a draft?
Yes, nothing changed since last week. We didn't have a P L meeting today, so we didn't get an update.
Okay. Well, I've got some really good news. Every year, we do Scranton Reads, one city, one book. And this year, the book is H.G. Wells', The War of the Worlds. Great read, written in eighteen ninety-eight, very, very relevant. So let me just give you your copies. Now, this goes on throughout the month of October, and there's a lot of events, any one of which you can attend, and they're just fun things to do. It'll start this Friday, first Friday kickoff, and that's at the Albright Memorial Library. From six to eight P M., there's gonna be an art show of paintings and artwork based on the novel. Take a look at that. Then on Wednesday, October tenth, at two P M. at the Albright Memorial Library, they will show the nineteen fifty-three film, War of the Worlds, with Gene Barry. Great movie to watch, especially those of you who are old enough to remember The Communist Threat. Little stuff like that is in there. Also on Wednesday, October tenth, at the Albright Memorial Library, later that evening at six P M., they are going to have local historian Robert Powell from the Carbondale Historical Society will tell the tale of the nineteen seventy-four Carbondale UFO sighting. I wanna go to that one, 'cause I was out of town when that UFO came calling, so I'd like to see that. October eighteenth, Thursday, at six thirty P M., also at the Albright Memorial Library. We have a thing called the Socrates Cafe, and people get together just to throw ideas together, and they're gonna talk about all the philosophical issues that come up in this book, The War of the Worlds. And then October twenty-fourth, at Penn State Scranton, now, this is actually in Dunmore, but it's still part of the overall Scranton Reads project. The world is not coming to an end, trust me. A conversation about telling the news. And I know I'm not old enough, anybody, nobody here is old enough to remember Orson Welles' radio broadcast in nineteen thirty-eight on Halloween, The War of the Worlds. Remember that, hearing about that? That is the classic fake news, where everybody thought that the radio drama was an actual news event, and people in New Jersey were running amok thinking that the Martians were coming. Wish they weren't. So that's Wednesday, October twenty-fourth, twelve fifteen P M. at the Hawk Lectures Hall at Penn State Scranton. Now, here's one that's not really part of H.G. Wells', but it's part of Scranton Reads. Wednesday, October twenty-fourth, at seven P M. at the Catlin House, which is the Lackawanna County Historical Society on two thirty-two Monroe Avenue. A scarcity of caskets, the nineteen eighty, nineteen eighteen Spanish flu in Scranton. Everything you didn't wanna know or too afraid to ask, where did they put all those bodies? So you can find that one out. And it just goes on and on. At Marywood on the twenty-ninth, six thirty P M., they will talk about the War of the Worlds. When will the next pandemic occur? And also at Marywood on the thirtieth, six thirty P M., survival skills. How will you survive if the Martians finally do attack? So, a lot of fun things to do, so I hope people take that to heart, because Scranton should be a town that reads and takes advantage of all that the library has to offer. And finally, just a reminder, October eleventh is the Austin Burke Charity Auction for the Library. Austin Burke's original art will be sold off. Tickets are twenty dollars. It starts at, well, there's a preview at six P M. The auction starts at seven P M. You can get your tickets online at W W W dot Albright dot org or in person at the Albright Memorial Library. So please enjoy everything that the fall has to offer, especially the scarcity of caskets. That's where I'll be. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Williams?
Good evening, city council. My name is Joanne Williams. I've been a Scranton resident all of my life and love the city. It's been a while since I've been before this podium, but in a way, it's good to be back. I just have a few questions I'd like to ask you. First of all, does Geisinger Medical Center own any part of Naught Park?
No. Well, I shouldn't say. There are some land in the back that they do, they do own, way where the rides used to be back in that section. There might be a small portion there.
Okay, 'cause I know, like, by the museum, as you go up that road, like, back, they park there.
Right.
Okay. And really, that's no concern. To me, it isn't, you know? But there is also a smaller parking lot, and they park there, too. And my concern is this, is that, and I have observed, there's elderly that goes up there, there's families, you know, people who wanna exercise cannot park. There is a signed three-hour park, and they're never ticketed. I reside in the hill section, and we have to buy a pass every year, you know, and also visitors' pass. But I'm just hoping that, you know, you know, I just don't wanna see CMC take that park over.
I've had this conversation with the Parks Director, and they're going to repost the one parking lot by the Brooks Mine.
Right.
To three-hour parking. It's not posted right now, so that's why they can park there.
Well, the one is posted, though.
One is posted, but the other one isn't. So by posting that lot, that'll free that entire lot up for people visiting the park.
Yes, because, you know, people, you know, it's, this park is for, for us, for this, residents and the taxpayers, and people come from anywhere. Also, I just, I took my grants and up, swimming up at Naught Park a few times this year. We enjoy that. And I noticed no lounge chairs, no benches outside of the park that you'd be able to sit and watch. What, no picnic tables. What's going on?
I know there's a new board, new members of the board, and I know they're very interested in improving the parks, so have you gone to any meetings up there?
No, but I think I'm gonna start from ten.
You should, you should, yeah.
Because-
They're having meetings at the park now versus always having at Westfield, so.
Oh, because, I mean, you know, I'm gonna say it, Mayor Doherty worked so hard in that park, and, you know, and I don't wanna see it go back to where it was. Okay, so that's for the park, right? Now, my next thing is, after retiring from the Scranton School District four years ago as a clerk, I continued to work part-time for Telespan and as a Scranton School Crossing Guard. I crossed, I did that in my twenties, too. I was crossing children on Pittston and Maple Street, it'll be three years ago at the end of this month, where me and one student were hit by a car. The student almost died. It was horrific. I have injuries that I will have the rest of my life from it. Now, before the accident, I had called the person in charge, I won't name that person, down at City Police Headquarters, and told her numerous times of the problems at that corner. I even asked her for cones. I would place them out, we don't have any here. I know that's way back. But as, as of today, nothing has been done with that corner. No lines painted, cars parked right up to the corner, to the, you know, can't see. It's a, I mean, every corner's tough, and school crossing guards have an important job along with the bus drivers. We are the ones that make sure children get to school safely. But when we don't get any cooperation from the city, and I'm going to the school board, too, for light at best, I talked to the administrator over there, light at best, I don't do it no more, I'm disabled from this, but it really upsets me to think that it's three years and nothing has been done. I am just hoping, I'm not coming down here, I'm hoping you will work, not only, not with me, but for the children of this city. Look at Scranton High School, too. University of Scranton, we have all those blinking lights, we have all these things for these college kids, which is good. What do we have for our elementary kids? Nothing.
No. I mean, that's a very dangerous intersection.
And I'll, I'll end it. I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you.
Please, please, please take a look at these corners for our children's sake, and I thank you for listening to me.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ron Elman?
I wasn't even gonna talk about politics tonight. I read that shameful mess that Kelly wrote in the paper favoring Dr. Ford. I always say that I believe in facts. Well, as of today, of course, Mr. Kelly, knowing or not, Dr. Ford has collected over seven hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars, and he says she has nothing to gain? Shame, shameful reporting, or whatever you call that dribble he puts out every week. And she doesn't even have lawyer's fees. I've had more of a lawyer's fee trying to repossess a car than she's paying to get all this money. And Flake, he has such a dismal record, he, within Arizona, there wasn't any sense in him, he'd never get reelected. I, I've heard some people talking about the episode, The Elevator, and I certainly agree. It just looked like a staged affair, 'cause immediately, those two women were gone. Normally, you'd tell people what you, you're yelling and screaming about, but not them. I still like politics, and I'm not, I yell at y'all and everything, but I'm not really mad at no one. I say I am. But I don't like the filthy, dirty politics we have in Scranton. Bill Cartwright is deliberately, and I mean deliberately, keeping his friends and supporters that owe huge sums of money in taxes from being foreclosed on. Look right across the street, six, seven years now, that building that's rented out, Jefferson refuses to pay a penny in taxes, nothing being done, there's no way to get it on foreclosure sheets. I told you a few months ago, I wanted to see it on that paper, 'cause I wanna bid on it. Nobody cares about. You know, how many people on that sheet owe? Probably ten or fifteen houses would, would be less than a hundred and seven thousand dollars that people have lost because of people like Jefferson, and it goes on. Every once in a while, there's a name in the paper where somebody has bought a house that owes taxes in the city. It, no, you guys don't do a damn thing about it, nothing. Last week, Mayor Cartwright congratulating the repairs of the building, and he says they're filling up an empty building. They evicted everybody in that building. Roses Dennis was there, that they're using our millions to repair it, that they shouldn't have ever had those three million dollars. That's just why I don't like the politics in this city. They have just hit the bottom of the barrel. I know everybody's about fed up with Cartwright and Casey's attacks, 'cause they don't have nothing else to talk about. They don't have a positive. After all this time, nothing to brag about. You know, sending them back would be like sending Bemis and Butt-Head back to Washington. The mayor is just responsible for taxing people out of their homes in this city. I doubt if he's ever talked to anyone, but I have. And real quickly, I know some of you probably see that live P D. at, at night, Friday and Saturday, that the police are always chasing someone and put them into a convenience store or gas station. If you look, the whole country, gas is fifty, seventy-five cents cheaper than here. We can thank Doc, we can thank Mr. Wolf for that, the man that promised me last year that he's gonna tax the gas people. Now he's saying it all over again.
Thank you, Ms. Elman.
You know, fooled me once. Thank you.
T.J. Patel? Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council?
Good evening, council. Long time no see. Miss me just like a migraine. Good evening, um, you know something, most of the time, Lenny Srebro, Scranton resident, most of the time I come here, you know, I have problems, everybody, I think everybody knows about the flooding problem in Kaiser Valley, that I continue my thing about, you know, trying to get the problem solved. I'm almost afraid to bring up the flooding problem that still exists. It's been the worst one for the August rains. All the neighbors agree this is the worst ever. Most of the houses in my neighborhood were completely underwater, like their basements, and lost everything, up to the first floor, the majority of them. That's how they ended up. Me, I got lucky this time. I built a new house recently because the old one burned, and I kinda, you know, engineered everything about it till, for the flooding problem, because nothing seems to get done in, I believe, about twenty years now. My quest has only been for the last three years. But I wanna say, when people do something, I really do appreciate it, whether I get along with them or not. And Mr. Gahan has been a real help. They're starting to pave in the area of my home that really needed it. People don't even drive up the, a couple of the roads because of the craters and ravines, like, you know, they literally stay away from the area, but we're getting some paving going on. I wanna thank Bill Gahan, I wanna thank Dennis, uh-
Gallagher.
Dennis Gallagher, I'm sorry. John Poches has been there. These people have come out and, and spoke with the neighbors about the, the problems going on, what we could do, and we came up with some good ideas, you know, about taking care of some real problems, you know, that they changed that, or they made some changes to help the neighborhood, so thanks to those guys. But, on that note, DPW came out to look at the, how that drainage pipe that still plugs solid to the state. I learned that one of the, DPW came out and reported that the pipe is working perfectly, which, that's not true. Now, I gotta say that in a moderate or a light rain, you know, when the water comes down and makes its way to the retention pond, that the soot in the retention pond is higher than the drainage pipe itself, but it does manage to drain, you know, slowly in a moderate rain, but forget, anyway, he put in a report that that drain is working perfectly, which I wanna state that, no, it's not. That person needs to come out in the typical heavy rain and see what's going on. That drainage pipe actually, that goes to Kaiser Creek, actually pushes the water the opposite way, and I'm the first to get it. It fills up my yard. This has been going on a long time, that the problem with that pipe, like, when Kaiser Creek can't handle the rest of all the drainage, it actually comes back through that pipe. You go to the end of the pipe on the other side where it empties into Kaiser Creek, and you'll see it's clean as a whistle there. But in the flooding, when it pushes all the sediment coming down Kaiser Creek, it all ends up in that retention pond and in my front yard. I can't believe that my grass is black from the last storms that we had, the continuous rain for a couple of days in a row in, in August, a few weeks back. But the neighbors, each time, it's, this is the worst one yet for a period of twenty years. I, I sure hope that we don't forget about that drainage pipe, that maybe we could still get it flushed. I've always said that's gonna help the problem if we just simply flush it. Two years ago, they came to flush it and only did it halfway and were supposed to come back, and they never came back. I hope that somebody looks into that, that maybe with the problem solving with this flooding problem, we can get that drainage pipe flushed. That's certainly gonna help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council?
Evening, council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. Start off, I'd actually like to congratulate Jim Lockwood on his accomplishments. He was so good at it that we now got a fifty cent raise on the newspapers we gotta pay. Congratulations, Jim. We had in here a law that you guys passed on the container, containers within the city, that Hinton came out and said they're considered structures, yet I haven't seen any enforcement. I've sent him letters, both to he and the mayor, and yet nothing's been done about it. He came after me about our containers in the yard, which are C containers, trying to classify them as structures. We're in a court hearing, and there's an appeal pending, but after that, you guys passed a law on containers. Containers are supposedly now considered structures, yet nobody's moving them in the city. You pass a law, it should be enforced, and that's Hinton's responsibility. So I think you need to do something, send him a letter, and let's get some action on what he's supposed to do, if that's his job. I mean, he was good at going under the table, Mr. Gahan, I'll give you credit for that, to bring out about the issue at Naught Park. It's a major conflict of interest. He shouldn't be allowed to do what he's doing, and he changed the name of what it was originally, and that changed the whole context of the contract. So therefore, it should be rebid without any question, and everybody will get an opportunity, maybe to put him in his place, because for him, the law is the law, but it's not for him, it's for everyone else. So what he pulled, I think it should be reversed without question, and let's put it back on the block where it belongs. I may even wanna bid it.
Well, Mr. Bowles, I have good news for you. We actually did receive a letter just today from the mayor that Mr. Hinton will not be going through with, with that property, with that, as long as he's employed by the city. There's also a letter from Pat Hinton as well, so.
Okay, so it's been canceled?
Correct.
Good. I wasted that couple of minutes for nothing.
I don't, it hasn't been canceled, it's just, I read it that, I don't wanna take your time, so I'll wait till fit to order, but I, I read it differently.
I read it as, as long as he's employed by the city, he won't operate a coffee shop and-
Okay, well, at least we're finally moving in the right direction to kinda put this place back where it belongs. The other part is, and I've heard comments, we dance around this- The other part is, and I've heard comments, we dance around this, we dance around that, we're all great, we should hold a dance class here for dancing around issues. And one of the issues is the mall. It's up to the council, the school board, to go and have this reassessed at its true value. We're heading in another direction to kill this city, kill our seniors again, but you're patronizing the mall. Now he's opening up a theater again, he's doing this, he's filling his pockets while he's emptying ours. They had no problem assessing a church they were gonna tear down that was worth a dollar and not do nothing about a mall that's worth thirty, forty million. That's money our seniors need, that's money this council needs, that's money the city needs. And we've been turning our blind eyes. So I believe it's up to council now to finally take charge and make the first move. On top of that, I think you should come to the next, uh, school board meeting and put them on the spot. They're good at squandering millions and millions of dollars and then acting, uh, pretty stupid about it, that they didn't know this, know that, but they're educated people. They should know what the heck they're doing, and we should be there telling them what they should be doing and lead them around. Take them on a dance lesson, that they can't dance around the issue anymore, just because they're getting space in the mall there, they're ignoring the people in this community. And we're the voice, not them. And that you should be pushing to tax the mall at its fair rate, no more than anybody else is getting. You buy a property, you get a new assessment. We've been in battles over this county right along. You should be at the commissioners' meeting, representing the people in this city about what the mall and the county and everybody else is doing. You have Joyce over there, who's not a tax collector, and he's also the solicitor. So he doesn't like what you say on one side, he puts a hat on and goes on the other side and litigates because he's filling his coffers from both sides, yet nobody's opening their mouth about it. We don't have fair and impartial judgment and treatment for the people in this city. So I believe that pe-- here, in this council, you have to start taking the affirmative. You may wanna be a commissioner one day, Mr. Gahan, I know there's talk about this one moving here or there, but it starts here, uh, making the changes for the future. It's nice to read about this and say we're doing this and doing that, but somebody needs to take the lead here and get something done for the people in this community, and that's with the commissioners, and that's with the school board. It's time to stop with a blind eye and turning our heads the other way. The time for action is now, and that's when action counts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. I have a question. Did the storm soar? Was that, did that come in, the study, or...
No, we had a meeting with the consultant, uh, earlier this evening, this afternoon.
Uh-huh. And is it ever going to be broadcast or televised, or...
Yeah, we're gonna have a workshop with them, I think. They mentioned, uh, when they have a draft. I'm sure we'll make, we'll probably try to have, do that out here in council chambers.
Is it, I mean, you know, it's, uh, important that people understand that it's going to be another bill they will be paying, and, uh, my only concern is, I have a lot of land, I pay taxes on it, and it's not paved, for the most part, very little of what my, other than what my house sits on, and, um, I don't wanna be paying somebody else's bill either. Once again, people that are suing over the 511 taxes, it was in the paper again, please consider suing county and state over excessive tax exempts in the city of Scranton. Property taxes will soar if they win, and it probably will, and to be honest with you, I, once again, I don't need to pay the bill for the whole county and state buildings and everything else. They don't necessarily have to hire anybody from Scranton, and, uh, sure, a lot of the, like, the EMT taxes, or whatever you call it now, is somewhat unfair, 'cause somebody that works in another town doesn't have to pay them, but I can't afford to have my taxes double every two or three years. And, uh, the fireworks, I guess that's been passed? Has that been passed, the fireworks? Okay. Uh, I kinda thought, good luck on the Fourth of July, try and enforce that, but, uh, if they, uh, at least curtail fireworks from June, or if there was somebody in our neighborhood a couple of years back setting them off from, uh, probably from the thirtieth of May, and that starts to get a little much. And, uh, as far as the chamber is concerned, about two weeks ago, I had mentioned the chamber tax proposal, it was a state, but it will affect people in Scranton. Services including health care don't cost enough already. Personal income tax to retirement income, essentially what they wanna do is have everybody else pay, uh, paying their taxes, and, uh, you know, there's no, uh, no illusion in my mind that small businesses and the average Joe are paying for their friends. So it's really, uh, imperative that you, uh, maybe voice something to them and, uh, tell them to, please back off, we have enough people losing houses and, uh, losing income. By the time the average minimum wage worker walks out in Scranton, Pennsylvania of their job on Friday with their check in their pocket, fifteen percent, if you work at minimum wage, fifteen percent of your paycheck is voided. So it's really important, it's getting down to the wire. I mean, these people need money, they don't need, uh, need excuses and, oh, well, it'll, it'll generate new business and whatever. It's like, if you don't have any money to patronize a business, what good is the business? It's just another frontage in a store. And, uh, by the way, uh, there's a lot of hoopla in Washington this week on our Supreme Court nomination. Well, I sympathize with the ladies, and it may be true, and maybe it's not, maybe we'll find out it's not, or it is, but saying that anything is settled law is totally disingenuous. Legislatures write laws, executive branches sign them into law, and then they are heard by the Supreme Court. If you want any proof of that, just go to the ACLU and see about, I'll finish, municipalities on juvenile, juvenile, uh, curfews. Uh, up in Nicholson, they made a curfew that sundown, the sunset, you had, couldn't be on the street if you were a juvenile. I mean, rest them on their way off the school bus, four forty-seven on December twenty-first. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Marie Schumacher. Uh, last week I mentioned that the, uh, the, uh, tenth of October assessment appeals will be heard in the Electric City. A parking garage is seeking a reduction. What it is, I don't know, but I ask you guys to find out, did any of you find out how much they're asking? Now, I gotta take that as a...
They don't generally ask for a specific amount, but they, you know...
No, they do.
They, in this case, they did, with the commercial? All right, well, I'll check with the city solicitor and make sure that's just...
I believe they do.
Okay.
I had to tell them when I appealed what I thought was a fair one, and I think they do, they used to have them, as I said, that the top of the column still says, current assessment slash re, um, request.
Well, I thought it was current assessment and the result, but...
And I, I think that you should ask for that. Uh, that's one of the things I'd like to ask tonight. Number one is that somebody finds out what that is, and if it's unfair to the taxpayers, that somebody goes down there and states that. You are allowed to sit at that table, and we need somebody there. And, uh, so, but I do think it would be nice when we get it, just to judge in our own minds, when we know properties, if we think they're, it's a fair request or not. So I think that should be done by the county. Uh, on seven B, I wanna ensure that that environmental remediation that's happening on that lot is full and complete and that it could be built upon. That is correct, right?
That's the plan, exactly. That's why it's taken longer than expected.
And the matching funds are not coming out of our operating budget?
Not that I'm aware of, but we can check that.
Um, and then, uh, Mr. Gahn, you said you did not, we were not able yet to get a list of the equipment that DPW has for dealing with stormwater.
I did not receive that yet, no.
Right. Uh, I would like you to put a little pressure on them, and particularly to find whether they have a, I think it's called a claw, that's what somebody said, that's what I used to watch that come down the street, take off the drain cover, put this big thing in and get the goop out and put it in the back of a truck and take it away someplace. Um, that was called entertainment for us kids back in my day, but I would like to see that demonstrated over at that proper, at that retention pond on Dewey that Lenny's been talking about. I mean, there is no reason in God's little green earth, if I had a place to put it, I'd go over with my shovel and dig it out. I mean, it's just crazy, what we do and what we don't do. And, of course, the, it's, the pipe is still gonna be a problem unless that's cleaned out some way. I would think we would have some high enough pressure water that could take care of that, but, but at least get that retention pond cleaned out. Uh, now, another problem that I have, issue I have, I did a right to know, and what I got back was not satisfactory. Where you all agreed to turn over a whole lot of money to Scranton tomorrow, and where is it? That's what I got back. We've turned it over. Why don't we get reports? There should be a report on the agenda, on the third order, that shows how much they got. We all know that, how much they got. They got part of the pilot in addition to what we've given them, et cetera. But we need to know on a regular basis how they're spending that money. I mean, I know they hired an executive director, that's probably, you know, most of it, but I, I don't, I'm not happy that you people hand over money that we get to another organization and then it's just like...
We actually had a caucus tonight on that issue.
Then why wasn't it in here? And speaking of in here, uh, last week, I recall it being said, after I requested that the meeting that was held back in the governor's room today be held in here, where we could have heard something. Wayne, I don't know what you said at all, it's, you're, you were speaking too low. But the reason given for not doing it was there was gonna be a, a squawk box, so somebody was gonna come in by phone and participate. Well, that didn't happen, so...
The meeting was advertised as in the governor's room because of the fact that we thought it was going to be a call-in, uh, but once it was advertised, it has to be held where the meeting is advertised.
Twenty-four hours, that could've been changed, no? Anyway, that was a disappointment, 'cause I'm sure most people, and, and with the whole thing, if I may just finish, 'cause that was disappointing to me, what that guy said. I mean, they've been spending over, well, over a year to determine what the fees are gonna be? Nothing about a capital budget, where the work needs to be done? Nothing, nothing, I mean, they didn't even know that after all the talk we've had, that those, the storm lines along three oh seven are our responsibility, as they are along all of the, the state roads. And they didn't even know that? So that was very disappointing, and I'm no longer looking forward to the report because I think it's gonna be somewhat meaningless, it's just justifying another fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Don Hewitt, any motions or comments?
Uh, yes. I just wanna briefly comment on the subject of today's work session we had with Arcadis regarding stormwater. Uh, let me start off by say, restating my position that the study absolutely should've been commissioned, uh, prior to the sale of the sewer authority. And the fact that it wasn't just blows my mind. The, the result of not conducting the study, as Councilman Evans pointed out a couple of weeks ago, is that the city is not capable of properly handing, handling stormwater. And as we heard at our work session, this won't be a simple undertaking. Um, I just think this is one of the many examples of city government being reactive instead of proactive, and I think that's an approach we must change. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Uh, yes. One of the things I wanna touch on a little bit, what Marie said, um, what we're trying to do, I had a conversation with ECTV, we're trying to get to the point where they can hire, get new equipment that we could put on the table here that would pick up the voices for the camera, 'cause that's part of the problem right now, is we're passing around microphones, and logistically, it's a real problem, we have guests at the, at our large table there. So if they can do that, I think then there's no reason why we wouldn't have all of those meetings in here and be, and they'd all be televised. And so I think that's our goal. Uh, and we're supposed to get an answer sometime this week, so hopefully by next week I'll have an answer from ECTV. Um, over the last few weeks, a regular speaker has, uh, at our city council, may have challenged us, all of us, to post a, to the city website, the work that we do individually related to city business during the previous week. So while in theory, that's a pretty good idea, uh, but with full-time jobs and all the responsibilities we have with our positions on city council, it isn't practical to think that this could be done on a regular and consistent basis. But with that said, I've said in the past, and I've described in the past, my schedule in a typical week of a, of city business, and I will do that again this evening to give an example of what may take place week to week for our city council member. So beginning from last Monday to this evening, for a full week's review, last Monday, of course, we had our, uh, city council meeting in city hall. Prior to that, uh, myself and Councilman Don Hewitt met with the Pennsylvania Economy League during the afternoon, and that evening, we had our caucus, and city council met with the developers of the proposed project at the Scranton State School for the Deaf. And of course, we had our meeting. On Tuesday morning, I met with the mayor, the police chief, police chief Graziano, representatives from Lackawanna County and Scranton Tomorrow to discuss some ongoing issues related to the downtown. Wednesday and Thursday, I dealt with approximately a half dozen citizen complaints of various types, referring them to the proper city departments for a resolution. On Friday, I had a meeting in the morning at the Chamber of Commerce to meet with some city officials and others to discuss some grant opportunities and new initiatives that I'm interested in that are related to our neighborhoods. Early Friday afternoon, I met with BA Belzoni and our city clerk Lori Reed for a conference call with the representative of C Click Fix as we continue to move that initiative forward. Later that afternoon, Friday afternoon, myself and Councilman Gahn were guest speakers at the University of Scranton Student Government Council's meeting. Over the weekend, I met personally with several residents to discuss their concerns and issues, as well as answering numerous emails I received during the weekend, on the weekend, and of course, somewhere in the mix, answered many phone calls and responded to those as well. During the week and the weekend, I attended at least seven events sponsored by the Scranton Fringe Festival, while not directly related to our work on city council. As a vocal supporter of the arts, I felt it was in my best interest to learn as much as I could about this important city arts event and how it relates to an increase in commerce within the city and specifically the downtown. So that brings us to today. Monday, October first, we attended a work session in the governor's room at four thirty with representatives of Arcadis, the organization that is working on our stormwater study. At five fifteen, we met in public caucus with Leslie Collins and Josh Mast of Scranton Tomorrow for some updates on their work. Five forty-five, we held a public hearing on a liquor license transfer, and at six P.M. our regular city council meeting started, and here we are. So would I call that an average week? Probably. Sometimes it can be busier than that, much busier, sometimes much less busy. And of course, that doesn't count the forty to sixty hours I spend a week working on as, as a small business owner in Scranton, and the time my colleagues spend as well working in their own professions. And certainly, none of us are complaining, 'cause that's what we signed up for. At the end of the day, if it's really wanting to affect positive change, you do what you have to do. But this is just a response to a personal request from, uh, one of our speakers. Uh, again, I don't think it's a bad idea if we were able to post this, I just don't think it's practical, so every now and then, I'll give a weekly report of what happened from the week before, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Gahn, any motions or comments? Councilman Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Just a few concerns that I received from attending a neighborhood meeting in the Hill section. Mrs. Reed, I have quite a few here, I just want to check through some of them. I was asked to ask the city administration to consider paving the 800 and 900 blocks of Costello Court from Gibson Street to Ash Street. Also, there was a major concern about Oakell Court that needs to be paved between Rosalind Street and Linden Street, and we did already send a letter out on that, that to the administration. The 200 block of Arthur Avenue, there's several storm drain issues blocked, and people are flooding down there when they get a light to moderate rain. Also, Mrs. Reed, if we could send a letter to the DPW about a street light that does not come on until 10:30 or 11:00 PM, very dark and dangerous on the corner of Rosalind and Arthur Avenue, the 200 block. Also, the 700 block of Mahan Court between Gibson and Pine, same thing with storm drain issues, this area turns into a huge lake when it rains, and there's also a huge pothole that needs to be filled. Another resident complained of drainage issues on Harrison Avenue, the Harrison Avenue Bridge when it rains, so if we could have Mr. Posh's check that out. The 900 block of Prescott Avenue and North Irving and Ash Street, people flying through stop signs, if we could send that to the police department. And then I received a request that we ask OECD to consider sidewalk improvements in front of John Adams School, if that's possible, the area is bad. Storm drain issues at Quincy and Myrtle Street, and several abandoned properties on Quincy Avenue, and I have specific addresses that I'll give you after the meeting, so I would appreciate that. Also, I have a question, just going through some of the mail we've received in the last few days. The business administrator's office is transferring $349,000 from the Workers' Comp Trust Fund to the IT Department for capital expenditures, so I'd like to ask what that is for specifically, if we could find that out for next meeting. Also, we received a letter from the Borough of Taylor, I won't read through the whole thing, but it's from the manager of the Borough of Taylor, and there's some concern over a line, a service line, sewer line that services the museum operated by Lackawanna County. And they go through the whole background here, but they have serious environmental concerns, and the general public has concerns that must be addressed in this area. They did copy the council, DPW, engineer and city planner on this, so if we could get follow-up on it, Mrs. Reed, I would appreciate that. Also, we did receive a letter, a response from Mayor Courtright regarding our letter a week ago, asking for his opinion on the coffee house at Naught Park with Mr. Hinton, and I do want to read this letter into the record. Mayor Courtright says, Dear Councilmen, I am in receipt of your follow-up letter of September 25th, 2018. To address your questions, I have carefully reviewed the opinion issued by your solicitor, Amel Menora, along with the position of the Recreation Authority issued by its solicitor. Having great confidence in their legal abilities and expertise, I concur with their position that the lease of the facility at Naught Park is valid and in conformity with ethical requirements. Despite my concurrence, I have discussed this matter with Director Pat Hinton, and he has agreed that the proposed coffee shop will not open during his tenure as a member of my cabinet. Please see the attached letter memorializing the same. Thank you respectfully, Mayor William Courtright. I appreciate the response, but, you know, there's a couple of issues with this letter. Number one, the mayor doesn't really answer any of our questions. We asked him specifically what he thought about it, if he was in favor of it. Did he give the okay on this? And all he does is agree with the attorneys. We didn't ask him that, we asked him whether he thought that it was ethical, and that he would allow a member of his administration and his cabinet to go through with that. And I just still do not think this is right. Even if Mr. Hinton runs the coffee shop when he's no longer the director, the fact that it took place, this whole process took place when he was a director, that is just wrong. And it's time for the mayor and other members of his administration, quite frankly, to grow a spine. And will this council ask questions? Answer them truthfully, respectfully, and don't wait until a year or two later to come out with all of this stuff, because it's just ridiculous, and I can understand why people lose faith in their government when they see these kind of things go on. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments. Scranton Tomorrow was brought up from the podium. We did have a caucus with members from Scranton Tomorrow about some of their activities. They talked about some of the ongoing plans, and we actually are scheduling quarterly updates with representatives from Scranton Tomorrow to talk about some of their plans for the downtown. I believe our next update was scheduled for, is it January 14th? January 14th will be the next time they'll be on, so it should be every three months on an ongoing basis. We did get an update tonight about some of the initiatives that they've been undertaking, the planters that have been put on a couple of streets downtown have been done by Scranton Tomorrow, as well as some of their other initiatives that should be rolled out within the next few weeks to a month. So we're thankful to have them continuing to come in and give these updates on a quarterly basis. Another speaker, I think it was Mr. Bullis, brought up about speaking out to the county and the school district, and I'll say with myself, if you ask some of the commissioners, they're probably not a fan of mine, because, you know, I pretty regularly take them to task on some of the items that I feel are lacking there, and reassessment especially. And next year, with commissioner elections coming up, I'm sure that's going to be a very big issue. And again, in my opinion, many of the county administrators have been inept from the commissioners, the de facto majority, the control, or they've been silent. Nothing's been, nothing's been going on. So we'll see how that plays out in the elections next year. But it is something that's certainly on my mind and in the mind of my colleagues, we've spoken out on specifically county issues quite a bit, and the school district, unfortunately, as we know, is a disaster. Hopefully, they'll get their act together over there, but the way I look at the school district is really the way the city was about five or six years ago, unable to pay their bills, multiple investigations going on. So I hope the school directors will get their act together and get things going, and I know they're certainly trying, it's no fault of many of the members that are there now that just took office. But we are watching everything else, so that is all. Thank you.
5B, for introduction to resolution, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness for Ray Dominique's rear 2010 Far Streets, Scranton, PA 1A504, for masonry work to be completed on the front edifice of the building situated at 534 Lackawanna Avenue, Scranton, PA 1A503.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed with Council Number 33, 2018, an ordinance approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license owned by Sri Saibaba Corporation, doing business as TJ's Beer and Deli, currently in safekeeping with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, formerly used at 1640 Main Street, Dixon City, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 1A447, for use at 1801, 1803, Pittston Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 1A505, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6B, reading by title, filed with Council Number 34, 2018, an ordinance creating and establishing special city account number as noted entitled, 2018 Capital Budget for Receiving and Dispersing Capital Project Funds Designated in the 2018 Capital Budget.
Heard reading by title of item 6B, what is your pleasure?
I move that item 6B pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, filed with Council Number 32, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the City of Scranton Police Department, and if successful, a grant agreement, and accept the funds related thereto through the BJA-FY-18 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program, local solicitation in the amount of $21,053.
What is the recommendation of the temporary chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 72, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute an entry into a Brownfields Assessment Coalition memorandum of agreement between the County of Lackawanna, Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority, and the City of Scranton regarding the pending submission of an industrial sites reused program grant for the former RSM property site, Wyoming Avenue and Linden Street, Scranton, PA.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.